All right, everybody, it is 7:06 and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll. Hayden Chompsey here, Wooten House.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Riard.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
All right, we do have one public hearing this evening. First, we will hear from Deputy City Administrator Brian Scott. Following his presentation, if any members of the public would like to make a comment on the item listed for public hearing with regards to the request for a waiver to park a recreational vehicle on residential property located at 6681 Woodson Drive, then that would be the time. Brian, you're up first.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, this is a public hearing for the request of waiver to park a recreational vehicle on residential property of 6681 Woodson for a period of one year. You want to go to the next one? And there's the vehicle. So Mr. and Mrs. Waymire own the home of 6681 Woodson. They also own a Mercedes Sprinter camper van that is parked in the driveway of their home, and that's a photograph of the van. They have had this vehicle since at least 2020 as indicated on the aerial from the Johnson County GIS system. We as staff did not know of the vehicle until this past winter when a neighbor notified us and inquired as to whether this was a possible violation of city code. And when we took a photograph of the vehicle and did some research, we realized that it was. So, next slide. Section 320, 020 of the Missional Code addresses parking and storage of these types of vehicles and states such vehicles shall not be allowed on residential property unless such vehicles or conveyances or equipment is parked in the backyard or side yard behind the front building line defined as that portion of the building structure that is closest to the street or on the owner's lot or enclosed structure, such as a garage. You can't read that, I can't read that either. But essentially, one is allowed to request a waiver of one year or less from the City Council. If this is found to be the case, there's a violation of this code, and that allows them some time to address the situation. It does require the public hearing be held before the City Council and that notice be given to all the residents that live within 200 feet of the property. So that is the purpose for tonight's meeting. I went onto the property and I did a little exploration of the vehicle and measured it. Then I also kind of looked online at similar types of vehicles. It is registered under Kansas licensing as an RV, and there is actually a sticker in the side of it from the Recreational Vehicle Industry Association with a serial number on it. Typically, these vehicles, this is a newer model I found on the internet, but similar to the Waymire's. They're typically about 10,000 to 11,000 pounds, which exceeds what's allowed in the code. The average length is 24 feet. I think I measured this one about 22 or 23 feet, and then the height is about nine, nine and a half feet. And the aerial on the left was taken from the Johnson County GIS system, and it's about 2020 or 2021. And you can see that that white box kind of there in the corner of the driveway, that's their van. And then here's another photograph on the right. It shows the side yard of their property. You can see in the aerial, the blue line outlines their property. There's really not much distance between the side of their house and the property lines. It's probably about five feet. So they'd be hard pressed to even try to park the vehicle on the side of the property behind the property line. And then they have a swimming pool in the backyard, so getting into the backyard would be challenging and parking it back there as well. So I think that's it for my presentation. The Waymire's are here this evening. They may have some things they'd like to add, and then I think there are some residents that responded to the notice.
Sure, if the Waymire's, if you want to make any comment, then we'll open it up for public comment from anyone else. If you had anything you wanted to add to Brian's presentation, come on up to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, I'm Connie Waymire. Thank you for service, by the way, first off. And I appreciate the professionalism that Mr. Scott has demonstrated throughout this. We actually purchased the van in August of 2019, for which it's been parked in that spot for the past five years. In fact, you campaigned in our front yard and commented, and there was never any complaint. The certification of the title says that the vehicle weighs 8,601 pounds. But I think more than anything is that we've lived in this community now for a little over 12 years. We've taken much pride to support, keep things clean, keep things organized, and we thought we were doing the right thing when we registered the RV van because it is a, it's a passenger van as well. What wasn't noted is it's fully equipped with seat belts for passengers. I would say that just because it means that you could sleep in it, how is that different than if I had a 15-passenger van in my driveway? In the five years that we've lived there, we've had nothing but positive comments from people who passed by. We've never had a negative comment from any of our neighbors about having it there. As was pointed out in the map, we are certainly landlocked on both sides of our house. Retired fixed income means that an additional expense to store something like this would not only be an expense, but it would also limit our ability to use the van as a passenger van. Our initial conversation was to that point, to what extent does this actually meet the code that was written in 2011? It's not a bus, it's not a trailer, it's not a pool camper. It is intended to be like a custom van that is used for multiple purposes. So that left us rather confused about why after five years, when we hadn't heard anything about that there being a problem. And moreover, when we talked with Mr. Scott and I asked the question, had there been a complaint? The response was that someone drove by and thought it might be in violation of city code. Not that it was a problem or an eyesore, but that it might violate a code. How disappointing it would be if we took your time tonight to debate that issue when there are so many other pressing issues in our city. And I can't imagine how us keeping our property clean, manicured, and having our van in our driveway presents a problem. So I understand we're here tonight to discuss a waiver, but bigger than that for us is the reality of, is it really a violation of city code? Is this really what our city is going to rumble about? And moreover, that it would be a denial of us not to be able to not have it there because it would likely add another $200 a month to a retiree's budget to have that stored somewhere. So Mark and I would humbly ask for your consideration in really directing that the code be written to better outline the more modern vehicles that are available to you today, like this Mercedes Sprinter.
All right, thank you. We will now open it up for any other public comment on this item. So if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated. We will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. And we do ask that public comments be limited to three minutes a person. So is there anyone online? Do we see any hands, Justin? And then do we have anyone in our in-person audience tonight who wanted to comment on this item? Yes, black shirt first. If you want to come up and state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, my name is Joshua, and I live in the Mission Hills Apartments. My comment is, is anyone gonna turn up the green branches over here that's behind the stop sign and the sign says stop ahead in front of the Mission Gables Apartments? Because those are kind of blocking our way and walking down our sidewalk to those apartments or up to this area here.
Okay, thank you. We will take a look at that, thank you. And then, blue shirt, and at this time if we have comments on our, on this item, and then there will be another opportunity for public comment on items on our agenda a little later on, yes.
Raymond Raw, and I live here in Mission. In fact, I live across the street from Mark and Connie and down a couple houses. I've always looked at it the same way, it's just a van. If they were parking a 45-foot, 10-foot-tall big bus or that, I think I might have a different viewpoint, but for us and our family, we just see it as another van. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item relating to the waiver? All right, seeing none, I will now formally close the hearing on the request for a waiver to park a recreational vehicle on residential property located at 6681 Woodson Drive. The council will consider the related action items as Item 7C later on our agenda tonight. So next, we move into our special presentations. We do have two special presentations this evening. Our first is a proclamation declaring June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Mission. As a proud supporter and advocate for the Communities of All Ages program, we regularly look for ways to treat older adults with respect and dignity, enabling them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our Mission community. Elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation of our seniors is a serious public concern, and it is important to take action to raise awareness in our efforts to prevent abuse of older adults and to engage and empower seniors. I encourage you to join with me in honoring and celebrating older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our city. Our next presentation is a legislative update from, I believe it's Mary Calhoun and David Woods of the Johnson County Silver Haired Legislators. If you want to come on up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Mary Calhoun. I'm actually a Lenexa resident, but I'm here with David Woods, who will have a few things to say when I get done. But we're members of the Kansas Silver Haired Legislature, an entity formed in 1982. We are composed of 125 representatives, one from each county, with the exception of larger counties like ourselves that have five additional. Elections are conducted every two years by the Area Agency on Aging. Robin has given you some handouts that kind of summarize what I'm talking about, as well as some of the services that the Area Agency on Aging has for older citizens in Johnson County. Our purpose is to advocate for seniors and provide a voice at the state level with emphasis in educating our seniors about issues and steps to take for information on bills and resolutions, also to provide seniors ways to become involved in meaningful issues. In midsummer, we meet to define the issues presented by the 11 statewide PSAs for the next year and select those to be presented to the elected state legislature. Our Kansas Silver Haired Legislature statewide meeting is held in Topeka each October at the Capitol. At that time, we finalize resolutions and bills to present to the Kansas Legislature in January. This year, the issues that were presented in the earlier session starting in January were to support Medicaid expansion, establish a medical cannabis advisory board to explore and make recommendations about the legalization of medical cannabis use, support the voting rights of seniors, ensuring accessibility to the polls, expand the Existing Grandparents' as Caregivers Act to provide financial assistance to other relatives that provide care to children, and to support elimination of the tax cliff and increase income thresholds to qualify for an exemption of social security benefits from state income tax. Our Johnson County delegation works closely with the County Area Agency on Aging to support aging needs. Some of the resources available through the AAA are Meals on Wheels, the CHAMP's Program in Transportation, and one of the brochures that I gave you kind of describes all those benefits. As we have many seniors in our county, we ask that you encourage seniors over 60 to contact one of us with any concerns that might affect other seniors on a statewide basis, and our names and phone numbers and email addresses are also listed on that brochure if anyone would like to contact one of us. So I'll turn it over to David.
Mayor, council members, it seems like we're here at an appropriate time, as June is your seniors' month. A junior high civics lesson quickly. There are 105 counties in Kansas. In Johnson County, there are 19 cities, and Mary and I and the other members of our committee are going to every city this summer and giving a presentation so you kind of become more aware of the Kansas Silver Hair Legislature operation. To kind of drill down to Mission, I got on the website this morning, a web called Census Reporter 2022, and these are estimated numbers, and everybody in government likes to deal with numbers, okay? In the state of Kansas, there are approximately 2,935,922 residents. Of those, 665,725 are 60 or over, which is 22.7%. In Johnson County, there are 619,195 citizens, of which 137, 111 are 60 or older, which is 22.1%. And here in Mission, there are 9,894 residents, hopefully somewhere in that ballpark, 2,368 are 60 or older. So you've got 23.9% of your citizens, roughly 24% are age 60 or older. And I hope I see some heads nodding, so hopefully those numbers kind of jive in. Mary mentioned on the back of her handout, the five bullet points that the Kansas Silver Haired Legislature, and this was nationwide, I mean statewide. And this is my first term, it's a two-year term. We're not compensated, so we're volunteers. And it was amazing to me to go to Topeka for three days and learn the differences between what's important for people in Johnson County versus what's important for people in central Kansas, western Kansas, whatever. But we came up with those five bullet points, and I know I'm running out of time, so I apologize. With the Medicaid expansion, and just quickly, Kansas is one of 10 states that has not adopted Medicaid expansion available under the 2010 Affordable Care Act. So the other 40 states have, Kansas hasn't. We made progress in this for those people who support this measure. This year, on March 20th, the Kansas Legislature held two Medicaid expansion meetings, marking the first time in four years since legislative leaders have allowed hearings on expanding state healthcare coverage, okay? Then on April 26th, the Senate, the Public Health and Welfare Committee voted not to pass the Medicaid expansion bill out of committee. They needed 24 yes votes and got only 18. So again, this year, next month in Salina, we hold our annual planning meeting, and I would imagine Medicaid expansion is going to be another topic to present to the state legislature beginning next January. Now, the second bullet point, support voting rights for seniors and others. There were two major bills that made it to the governor's desk. She vetoed both for various reasons. Depends on what side of the aisle you sit on as to whether or not you were for or against them, but at least discussion was made during the last session to determine how to protect and support voting rights for seniors and other members. Let's see, existing, expanding the Existing Grandparents Caregiver Act. I can't figure out what happened there, so I'm not going to say anything. I've looked and looked. And finally, the tax issues, and this was important for seniors, the elimination of taxes on social security benefits beginning 2024 year, and also it raises the property tax exemptions from 40,000 to 75,000 on statewide uniform school finance levies. So again, a little bit of relief for seniors with their property taxes, okay? I think that's about it. We thank you for your time and allowing us to spend a few minutes talking to you about senior issues here in the state of Kansas.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for this group? I would just point you to the fact that every year, we as a city, too, put together a legislative platform for the state legislature, and I think there's some overlapping topics with issues on your list. So you know, if you're ever looking for support on things that align between our two platforms, feel free to reach out. All right, next, we would go into the issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has eight items tonight. Our council committee has met on June 5th and fully discussed each of these items. The committee has discussed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I may have the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items 4A through 4H.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll. Loudon.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Wooten House.
Hi.
Hayden Chompsey.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Kring.
Hi.
Riard.
Hi.
Motion carries. All right. So next, we will move into public comment. This is for if there are any other members of the public who would like to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda tonight, this would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Justin, do we have any comments online? Seeing none, any comments? Yes, black shirt and tie, come on up.
Yeah, my name is Aaron Hudson. I live in Kansas City, Missouri, and I'm just here to bring awareness to, there's a statute in the town called disorderly conduct, and I'm just here to bring awareness to, I believe that this statute is being abused by, you know, the officer and the judge in this town. It reads, "By with knowledge or probable cause to believe that such acts will alarm, anger, or disturb others." So that essentially means, whatever, you know, if you make someone angry, they have, you know, enough to charge you with this statute. I was charged with this for allegedly screaming a curse word in a department store. So I did fight the case. I brought this, I brought it to the, I brought it to trial because it was a false allegation against me. When I was in, when I was in court, I presented physical evidence. I presented the video of the incident. It didn't show me screaming a curse word or anything like that. I also proved, one of the witnesses that was testifying against me, I proved that they were lying about their testimony against me with a recording, irrefutable evidence that they were lying against me. The judge in this town still found me guilty of disorderly conduct for screaming a curse word, which, come on now, that's not, that's not criminal behavior in the first place. And for number one, number two, I didn't do it. So I just wanted to bring awareness that the judge in this town, Prosecutor Anna Wolf, and Officer Mason, Paula Mason, they're in on this, what I like to call the disorderly conduct scam. So I was essentially extorted by those three individuals here in this town. And my solution for this is to have the trials recorded so the citizens, especially African-American citizens of this town, can have some type of protection against such scams that are being around in you all's town. So I just wanted to bring awareness to that, and that's, and that's my piece. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move into items from our Planning Commission. We do have two items coming forward from our Planning Commission tonight. The first is the consideration of a preliminary development plan for the Mission Beverly multifamily housing development, 6,000, 6,005, 6,025, 6,040, and 6,045 Martway, 5935 and 5945 Beverly, and 5960 Dearborn. Mr. Scott, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to get pulled up here. So as the mayor stated, this is a preliminary development plan for Mission Beverly multifamily housing development, and the addresses are 6,000, 6,005, 6,025, 6040, 640, 645 Martway, 5935, 5945 Beverly, and 5960 Dearborn. So it's essentially that half block along Martway between Beverly and Dearborn, north as well as south. So it's two buildings, bunch of parcels of property that are all going to combine into one. And there is an aerial view of that, so it's all those properties that are outlined in the blue squares, the three properties on the south side of Martway that we once affectionally called the pizza lot buildings, they're no longer there. And then, I believe, the four or five parcels on the north side of Martway between Beverly and Dearborn. Millhouse Development LLC is the applicant for this development, and they're reposing the construction of a 261-unit multifamily housing development. As I stated, this will be on the north side and south side Martway. The north side is going to be Building A, that'll be the larger of the two buildings, that will have 204 units with a small retail space on the northeast corner of Martway, approximately 1,500 square feet. And this will also include a 265-space parking structure integrated into the building on the north side of the building. On the south side of Martway will be Building B, that'll be a smaller 57-unit building with 83 surface parking spaces. All the properties are currently zoned Main Street 2. MS2 zoning currently permits residential in conjunction with an office or commercial development. MS2 also stipulates a maximum height of three stories and/or 45 feet and a density no greater than 35 units per acre. So Building A on the north side of Martway is proposed to be four stories with a density of 80 units per acre. So they're requesting a deviation for both the height of the building as well as the density of the units per acre. Building B on the south side of Martway is proposed to be three stories with a density of 35 units per acre, so there's no deviation request for that building. This plan overall conforms with the newly adopted Tomorrow Together Comp Plan, which identifies these properties as mixed-use medium-density with 12, 45 units per acre. I should say, too, that there will be sidewalks all around the property on both sides of Dearborn as well as Beverly. I should say too, that there will be sidewalks all around the property on both sides of Dearborn as well as Beverly. The developers proposing to have nine parking spaces on the north side of Martway, it'll be parallel parking spaces. They are also proposing to realign the Rock Creek Trail. So currently the trail goes along the south side of Martway. And when it reaches Dearborn, it goes north, goes along the north side of Martway. And they're proposing to realign it so that it makes that turn at Beverly instead of Dearborn. You know, to go along the north side of Martway in front of building A. And they will actually donate that property to the city through their plan, so it's a dedication right away. I think that really includes everything that I wanted to say. Do you have any? Yeah, here's a couple of perspectives. And the architects are here tonight, so they can get more into the materials that are being used, the kind of thought process behind the design and so forth. So I won't steal their thunder in that regard. This item was considered by the planning commission at the April meeting. Was a public hearing held and after the public hearing, they took due consideration and approved it by a vote of seven to zero. So there's Devon Coffey with Mill Houses here tonight as well as her engineer and architect. So let them come up and do you have a presentation, anything you wanted to make Devon or any comments to make?
Hi, we just want to say thank you for hearing us again. We don't really have anything specific to say, but we're available to answer any questions. Just want to reiterate again that this is something that we're very, very excited about and that we're, we love the location. We love the city. We've been working on this for a very long time. And it was no small feat to pull this together, the assembly of all the different properties. As we've talked about before, we have. We've, you know, we've spent a lot of time working with neighbors and such to pull, bring things together. We appreciate your time that you've afforded us and listening to our presentations. We can go into a higher level of detail if that's appropriate. I'm just not really sure what, what you guys want to hear tonight, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you don't have any other further presentation planned, we can go ahead and do our public comment and then see if the council has any questions for either your team or Brian.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So first off, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue regarding the Mill House project? Seeing none, we'll open it up for council comment and discussion. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Yeah, Leah?
Since we last spoke, Mary and I had a board meeting and there was concern from constituents about parking. I just wanted to make sure I know that you've got double parking for the residents in, in this apartment building. But how is there parking for guests that would, would be visiting people in, in these buildings?
Yes, we, we, I think Brian mentioned, we have street parking available on Martway. There's nine stalls provided in front of the, the building there on the north side of Martway. We are providing actually above the required parking ratio. So people that are visiting, people that live on that, like the south side of Martway, well, there'll be some extra parking places in that parking lot for people to park in. The garage will be typically, we control our garage, a parking access control to keep it secure. That's an amenity that we like to provide the residents. So we don't, we don't typically allow public parking in the garage, but we would have the, the dedicated spots on the street. And then, like I said, there's additional parking beyond what's required in the south lot too. So hopefully we're covering that. I'm sure it's not as much as what they would love to see, but we are exceeding the requirement.
I just refreshed my memory. I think we've talked about this before, so residents will have to pay for parking in the, in the parking garage, the secure parking garage.
Garages are very expensive.
And so what will happen with people who choose not to do that? Will they be taking up the spots that were kind of left for guests?
We, I mean, our management will attempt to control that. Yeah, so if we see repeat violators, we have a process for issuing warnings and we will tell them if they're constantly parking there and not, you know, following our, our protocols. When we orientate a new resident, they're informed of what the rules are and where they can park and where they can't park. And if there's any problems with the city, you know, our management staff is, our management staff is Mill House. It's our company that is the manager. And so, you know, we're bringing someone in that's vested in the, in the deal and they will, of course, cooperate with the police or whoever we would need to work with to get some sort of a plan in place to stop whatever's going on.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Devon? Is, is it optional, can a resident opt out of paying for a spot in the garage? Or is it built into their base rent?
It's separate.
It's separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, a few comments. First of all, I want to reiterate my, my support for this project. I think in general, it's a good fit for the area. And again, like I've said before, a good use of some parcels that are, have not been well used recently. To, to speak specifically to parking, I just want to flag up that this is in the, the Main Street two district in our zoning code, which is specifically, the statement of intent includes language like a character unique to downtown that encourages an active streetscape, restricts automobile oriented uses. I, I think to the extent possible in a suburb like Mission, a minimization of parking is appropriate. This is a, a location that we want well-served by sidewalks, pedestrian access, bicycles, and there's transit stop nearby. So, you know, hopefully we can help remind residents that, that we have set out in our zoning and land use plans. A sort of intent to, to try and minimize some of the, the auto-oriented infrastructure in this zone. And that, you know, that dovetails nicely with, with climate action goals. I don't think we need to be paving every possible surface just with parking or encouraging vehicle miles more than it would be required for, like I say, for a city of our size and location within the metro. Coming off of that, my only, my only comment that I, that I also made at committee, but since you're here, I just want to reiterate. One of your conditions of approval was some screening on the east side of the parking garage. I, I did agree with the commission that that was kind of monolithic and, and not something I'd want to look at as a neighbor on the east side. And I, I expanded a bit further last time we, we had our commit, our committee meetings. I, I just think as long as we're making some, some, some effort to make that, you know, nicer to look at, nicer to walk past, you know, this is going to be a lot of, a lot of density. A lot of new residents using our sidewalks and hopefully being able to enjoy that and not having to walk past kind of a big concrete monolith. And in the same vein, on that east side for the garage entrance, and I think like a move-in or loading and trash area. Just a, a big curb cut there, more than a hundred feet long, I think, which is a, a bit daunting for folks on foot or with mobility devices. So just to, to piggyback on the, the planning commission's condition of approval on the screening, you know, just anything we can do to, to, you know, incrementally improve the experience on that side goes a long way for me. But speaking to the, the overall project, I, I really like what's going on here and how we're, I think, better using some land that really needs help.
Thank you. Yeah, I can assure you, we are addressing it in our meetings. We just addressed it in our final development plan review last week. And we're talking about adding some landscaping and, and kind of tweaking the screening on that side to make sure that it is a good looking.
Much appreciated.
Yep.
Debbie?
A couple of things. What is the monthly cost to park a car?
We haven't said it yet, but generally in Kansas City, in the metro area, it's usually around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for a garage parking place.
With all due respect, relative to using concrete, the, the parking structure and, and parking places are already there, they're just charging for them. So it's really not a sustainable issue relative to taking away from parking places. They've got them all structured right now. So if we were looking at that holistically, that we were looking at more walkability and everything, I think people still are, use their cars as their primary and they may bike and walk and things like that. But that part is already made, it's already there. So it doesn't really fit into the, we need to look more sustainable and not use cars and stuff. It's already there, they're just charging for it. I, I'm really wasn't in favor of the four stories. We have some mom and pop apartment complexes that just fit into the neighborhoods. And the more you continue, although it's a density issue for the positive, the more you continue to go up. It, it wasn't favorable to me, but you know, we can vote however. I thank you for your, your time and, and the work that you've done. I, I think it's going to be a, character wise, I think it'll look really good. I just wasn't in favor of the four, but it's there. Thanks.
All right, any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan for the Mission Beverly multifamily housing development.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the preliminary development plan with stipulations for the construction of a multifamily housing development along Martway Street between Beverly and Dearborn.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chompsey.
Hi.
Ryer.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Wiltinghouse.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Kring.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The final item for consideration from the planning commission is approval of a special use permit for Green Tech Auto at sixty-eight hundred West sixty-first Street. Brian, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a special use permit for Green Tech Auto Incorporated for use of the building at sixty-eight hundred West sixty-first Street. It's like staff before here. So Green, Green Tech Auto LLC is a national company that specializes in resourcing and remanufacturing batteries for hybrid and electric vehicles. They have approximately twenty-seven locations throughout the United States and are headquartered here in Kansas City, Kansas. At their Kansas City, Kansas facility, they receive used or damaged nickel metal hybrid batteries and lithium ion batteries for the purpose of dismantling, testing, and the reassembling to be sold again as a manufacturer batteries at a considerably lower cost to consumers. Individual battery cells that are determined to be defective are shipped to a company in Ohio that recycles them. Green Tech Auto recently purchased a former PPC flexible packaging plant at sixty-eight hundred West sixty-first Street in Mission with the intention of expanding their growing operation. The property is actually two parcels with the front southern parcel being zoned in one general industrial, industry. And the back north parcel being zoned C two B retail services. Neither zoning district lends itself to the intended use. And given the nature of the operation, staff suggested the best course was for Green Tech Auto to submit an application for a special use permit. Staff did visit Green Tech Auto's operations in Kansas City, Kansas, wants to middle of the application to gain a better understanding of their intended operations. Green Tech Auto intends to receive nickel metal hybrid batteries only at the mission facility. So they will not be receiving lithium ion batteries there. Those, those that are bad will be collected and shipped to a recycler in Ohio. Those that are good will be stored and shipped to their facility in Kansas City, Kansas, for further testing and reassembly to be sold as a remanufactured battery. Green Tech also intends to store the casings and other components for the batteries at the mission facility. This item was heard at the April twenty-ninth planning commission meeting in a public hearing. And after the public hearing was closed and due consideration was given, the special use permit was recommended for approval, seven to zero. The special use permit is for a period of three years. Staff felt that that would become a good trial basis. And I will kind of read through some of the stipulations of special use permit. The special use permit shall be effective for an initial term of three years. Upon expiration, the initial term applicant may apply for a renewal for a longer period of time, which such application will be evaluated by the planning commission and submitted by the city council. The property shall be used for resourcing of nickel metal hybrid batteries only. No lithium ion batteries will be resourced or stored at this property. The special use permit is contingent upon the property remaining as is regarding site design and building structure. Should the site be redeveloped in the future, the special use permit may be reevaluated for conformance of municipal zoning code regulations. The special use permit shall become void if the facility is vacant for six months or more. If the special use is determined to be in violation at any time of the five conditions of section four forty-five two, one point two one oh. Section four forty-five point two one oh of the municipal code, the special use permit shall become void and violation shall be corrected. And a new application for a special use permit shall be under review by the planning commission. A maintenance agreement shall be required of the property owner for the on-street parking that will remain with the property upon transfer of ownership. All snow removal and repair maintenance shall be the responsibility of the property owner, the owner's agent. The facility shall be adhered to, the facility shall adhere to all building and fire code requirements as determined by the mission building official or does he need in the consolidated fire district number two, fire marshal. Installation of an NFPA thirteen compliant fire suppression system is required. Installation of an NFPA seventy-two compliant fire alarm systems required. The building will be subject to periodic inspections with or without notice by CFD two and or city of mission inspectors. The owners of the property will work with the city staff to develop and implement a landscaping plan as well as make needed repairs to the building. So that is all in the ordinance for adoption of the special use permit. And we do have representatives tonight from Green Tech Auto. They would like to come and speak to your proposal or answer any questions.
Hello, just want to say thanks for taking the, oh, sorry. My name's Travis Brackman and thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. We're very excited to be expanding into the city of Mission and we're excited to be working here. I don't have any further comments to Mr. Scott's remarks, but if there's any questions, we're available to answer them.
First, we would ask if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue, Justin, anything online? All right, seeing no hands in the audience, we'll open the floor for council comments or questions, anything from council? Yeah, Debbie?
I just want to thank you for not including lithium batteries because you wouldn't have gotten in it.
Any other comments or questions, yeah, Trent?
Yeah, made comments similar to this in the committee meeting and some others did too, but this is exactly the kind of thing that I think we would want to highlight and flag. I'll be in favor of this. I imagine this will pass, but it meets our sustainability goals. It's a really cool, you know, industry and I, I think it's a really good addition to our city.
All right, seeing no other hands, I would entertain a motion on the special use permit for Green Tech Auto.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a special use permit for Green T Auto LLC to utilize property located sixty-eight hundred West sixty-first Street for resourcing of nickel metal high-dried batteries for hybrid vehicles.
Second.
Motion and a second, any final comments? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryer.
Hi.
Hayden Chompsey.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Wiltinghouse.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Kring.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We will now move into our committee reports. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
I will, thank you. The Finance and Administration Committee met on June fifth and considered five items. The meeting minutes, membership revisions for the sustainability and parks, recreation and tree commissions. Crossing Guard contract renewal and replacement of laptop and desktop computers were approved under consent agenda earlier tonight. Resolution setting public hearing dates for the division of the Rock Creek Redevelopment District number three B and consideration of a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for Rock Creek Redevelopment District number three C will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Seven A, resolution setting public hearing dates for the division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District number three B and consideration of a tax increment financing development project plan for Rock Creek Development District number three C. In twenty twenty, Sunflower Development Group received approval for the construction of a five-story, one hundred and sixty-eight unit multifamily housing development on the site of the former Mission Bowl at fifty-three ninety-nine Martway. In twenty twenty-three, Sunflower advised the city of their interest in doing a phase two project immediately to the east of the first project. And they submitted a preliminary development plan, PDP, for phase two that included a five-story apartment building with ninety-six apartment units. And they submitted a preliminary development plan, PDP, for phase two that included a five-story apartment building with ninety six apartment units. The PDP was approved by both the planning commission and the council in twenty twenty-three. At the time, the developer initiated the planning discussions around phase two. They signaled their intention to apply for TIF incentives for the second phase, and they have preliminarily proposed the same terms negotiated in the phase one agreement. This item for council consideration is a resolution whose sole purpose is setting public hearings on the TIF request for a future date in August. Approval of any incentives would not be considered until the public hearing has been conducted. In accordance with state statutes, the council may not adopt the resolution called calling public hearings until after the planning commission has found the TIF redevelopment project plan in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The planning commission considered the plan at their June twenty fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting and found it to be in conformance. Two public hearings will be required in connection with this request. One to consider the division of Rock Creek redevelopment district number three B into a second and to consider adoption of the TIF redevelopment project plan. Staff and the city's consultant team is reviewing the project's perform and other details and will bring forward a recommendation for any potential incentives in connection with the public hearings in August. Mayor, I move the city adopt the resolution calling for public hearings for the division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District number three B and consideration of a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for Rock Creek Development District number three C, all pursuant to KSA twelve dash one seven seven zero.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Boating House?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Perfect. Councilmember Ryer, will you please provide a report from the community development committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The community development committee also met on June fifth and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, cooperative agreement with Bike Share KC for maintenance and operation of e-bikes, traffic signal buyout at Ro- Row Avenue and Johnson Drive, Powell Community Center South bathrooms remodel and Rock Creek Trail fence painting were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. A stormwater master plan, planning assistance, cost share program, request for a waiver to park a recreational vehicle on residential property located at six six eight one Woodson Drive and PCC indoor track replacement will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Stack is staff is seeking approval for, of a contract with the US Army Corps of Engineers for the preparation of a comprehensive stormwater master plan. The plan will create a prioritized roadmap for proactive management of the city's stormwater system. This comprehensive approach will quantify the work needed to maintain the existing system, address legacy deficiencies through capital investments and develop a system to prioritize these efforts. Additionally, a digital dashboard will be delivered to simplify stormwater system management. The USACE Kansas City District will conduct the PAS study. The city of Mission will be the non-federal sponsor, providing a fifty percent cost share of the study. The USACE task for this study will be performed by the USACE via architect engineering contracts where designated. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with the US Army Corps of Engineer for preparation of a comprehensive stormwater master plan using the planning assistance to state's funding and obligate missions funds in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars.
We have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Boating House?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, our next item. The owners of the property located at six six eight one Woodson Drive own a Sprinter camper van which has been stored on their driveway for many years. The vehicle's length and weight classify it as a recreational vehicle under Mission's municipal code. Section three two zero dot zero two zero of the code addresses parking and storage of these type of vehicles and states that such vehicles shall not be allowed on residential property unless such vehicles or conveyance or equipment is parked in the backyard or side yard behind the front building line, defined as the portion of the building structure that is closest to the street, on the owner's lot or lots in an enclosed structure such as a garage. In order to comply with the code, the owners would have to store the camper in the, in the rear yard, but there is an in-ground pool in the backyard and access through the side yards is limited. The vehicle is too tall to store in the garage. The code further allows for the city council to consider granting a waiver to the requirements after a public hearing has been held where the property owner, owners within two hundred feet have the opportunity to be heard. The code further stipulates that if a written protest is presented to the city clerk or city council, then a super majority or six votes is required to grant the waiver. The code also states that the waiver may only be granted for one year. A public hearing was held earlier on our agenda this evening and notices present to neighbors within two hundred feet as well as published in the legal record. Council has the discretion to grant a waiver for a period less than one year, make a determination to grant the waiver for one year or a time shorter than one year or not at all. Mayor, I move the city council approve a resolution granting a one-year or length of time determined during the meeting waiver in accordance with section three two zero dot zero two zero C of the Mission Municipal Code to the residents of six six eight one Woodson Drive to allow for the storage of a recreational vehicle on the driveway of the home.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Just to clarify the motion, is the recommendation in the motion a period of one year?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Oh, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Leah?
I just wondered if you all could tell us what purpose you, you use the vehicle, please? And how often?
If you come up to the podium and the microphone for that. Sorry, I know you have the boot.
Thank you. Um, so we, we take grandkids to ballgames. There's seats, there's five seats in the back that we transported my mother in the nursing home because it was an easy way to get the wheelchair in and out of that. We've, we go to the grocery store. We usually transport long, you know, when we bought our bicycles. I mean, we use it as a multi-purpose vehicle. Yeah, and the other night we didn't have electricity, but because it's solar powered, we could go out there and we got cool. I mean, we, yeah, it's, it is a new design that I think is be- going to become more popular. I also think as technology advances that we'll see other types of vehicles like this. One of our friends has a vehicle that is about the same size as ours, only it's not as tall because the bed, the camper flips up on the top of it and they can sleep in it. So I think there's an ongoing list, but to answer your question, there are a variety of reasons that we have used um, the vehicle as a vehicle and we, we would really miss the opportunity to have the privilege to drive it as a vehicle as well.
Oh, can I? Go ahead. One more question. Um, would that be about the same size as a Chevy Suburban? In terms of length?
Brian, can you use the mic either there or? Yeah.
Wait, I have to grab my mic. So this should be longer than a Suburban.
Longer than suburban?
Yeah, I think a Suburban is probably right about eighteen, nineteen feet. So it's gonna be a little bit longer.
And, and Brian, just to clarify, the code as it's currently written has restrictions both in terms of type of vehicle, so sort of that purpose question, but also vehicle dimensions regardless of purpose. Is that correct?
There's actually two provisions of the code, so, um, the provision we're speaking to tonight um, speaks to a weight limit of eight thousand or more in the type of vehicle. We have another provision in our codes that speaks to vehicles in general, commercial type vehicles or vehicles that are, that cannot be twenty one feet or longer parked on residential properties.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's in, kind of to the point, vehicles are getting longer, so that, that's a little bit tight.
And I believe you said the, the weight of your vehicle is eighty six hundred, is that right? So over that eight thousand that's currently in the code anyway.
And I would, I would just add that we have some friends that have a fifteen passenger van because they have ten kids. It's the same length. They can't camp in it. So I think there's some, just some blurred areas there in the code and, uh, yeah, and, and the bigger thing is we've had this for five years in that place and not had any complaints. And to point, we still don't have a complaint. We have a, a possible violation of city code.
Ben, I saw your hand next.
Yeah, um, several things come to mind here. First of all, I, I am totally okay with the, the waiver request. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask for and approve. Um, I did want to touch on, on the code, the, the restriction for vehicles over eight thousand pounds means to me, we have a problem because I could probably drive around most neighborhoods and find several vehicles on every street that are excessive eight thousand pounds gross weight. We're talking not that large of pickup trucks by modern standards. Certainly a lot of electric vehicles are that heavy, so, um, you know, it, it, it's no fun to be sort of the test case here and I'm, for whatever reason it came up. You know, I'm, I'm supportive of the waiver, but I think we need to really look at the code and consider what we're gonna do to, to not run into this problem now that we've opened Pandora's box and we don't want to go down every street looking at whose truck is too big. On the RV front, I agree with the applicants and the neighbor. This is not a motor coach. It's not a bus. It's not a fifth wheel travel trailer. I don't particularly think that the intent of this code was to restrict this type of vehicle. Uh, that's certainly ever, you know, uh, open to everybody's discretion, but this is not what I classify in my mind as kind of an offensively large vehicle. So I think that aspect of the code, um, could be revisited as well. So, just in general, I was surprised by what I read in the ordinance. We'd like to go back and, and revise that and see what we can do about that, but, um, as to this case, I think it's a perfectly reasonable application and request.
Yeah, Debbie, I saw your hand.
A couple of things. Uh, the concern I have right now is about the year. What, what happens in a year? We have to come back and look at this all over again.
Yeah, I mean, I think Brian can speak to that, but one year is the maximum amount of time for a waiver in our code. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I'm hoping within a year we'll have a new ordinance, so this will come address this issue in others, yeah.
Yeah, I would echo Ben's comments. I'd like to have us take a look at the code and see if it aligns with sort of modern, modern vehicle practices and maybe have, you know, um, some sort of, you know, at least at minimum council discussion or even maybe broader public discussion about sort of the variety of vehicles we're seeing, because I think we've had other instances, um, with clear, with clear cut cases, you know, with campers and things where there is always going to be that issue of, um, you know, sort of selective enforcement on like, does someone make a call, you know, whereas you can drive around and see many of these vehicle types, you know, in the city, um, from time to time or exceeding, you know, the, I think it's forty eight hours in the code that you can have them, you know, without a special waiver. Um, and you'll, you'll see them for longer around town. So I, I would second Ben's comments about taking another look at the code, hopefully, you know, before this waiver period would run out.
I don't think this is an issue right now, but if we, if we have a waiver language-wise, we need to be defining it. If you sold the property, that waiver needs to go with you, not with the property, because if you sell it to someone else and they come in with a giant thing, that's the waivers not for that.
Yeah, their, their ordinance can't be assigned to somebody else. But that's, that's the last provision in the ordinance is it's not assigned.
Is that all that you have for me?
I think so.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate the opportunity for it to listen. Thank you.
All right. So we did have a, a motion in a second. We had our council discussion. Do we have any further comments or questions from council? Yeah, Debbie?
Go by, and I looked at the vehicle from different angles and I thought it was a van. I, I didn't think it was a recreational vehicle. It looks like a van to me.
All right. Robin, you want to call the roll?
I do.
Or vote, yes, thank you, sorry.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Boating House?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you both for coming and sitting through all of that. Yes. All right, um, last portion of my report, um, Powell Community Center indoor track replacement. The Powell Community Center's trucks, track surface is a high-density textured rubber that absorbs pressure and has excellent traction. Uh, Mondo rubber surfacing was originally installed due to limited competitors and durability claims. It was originally guaranteed for ten to fifteen years and has surpassed industry expectations by lasting twenty five years. Based on the performance of the Mondo surfacing, the decision was made to replace the track with the same material. Due to an eight-week lead time on production of the flooring, the city administrator authorized the expenditure following the committee meeting and now asks, and now asks the council to ratify the expenditure. Waiting until after tonight to issue a notice to proceeding to the manufacturer risks not being able to complete the track replacement during the two-week facility closure at the end of August. Mayor, I move the city council approve, approve a resolution ratifying the authorization of funds to proceed with removal and replacement of the indoor track surface project at the Powell Community Center.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the vote.
Kring?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Hayden Chompousi?
Aye.
Boating House?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move into our new business. We do have one item of new business this evening for approval of purchase of body cameras and in-car camera systems for the police department. Chief Madden, can you please provide the report?
Thank you, mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this as a new business item because it's, uh, it's important and, uh, we're, we're dropping like flies sometimes it seems like. As you all know, in-car and body cameras are a very important tool that we use every day to, uh, increase our transparency and trust between the community and our police officers. And as, as the newer of the two technologies, body cameras specifically have become more and more expected, uh, from, you know, whether it be in a complaint or in a criminal case. And those, those, uh, capture oftentimes footage that in-car cameras often do not. So the police department is kind of at a critical juncture with this technology. And we, while we do have enough cameras, body cameras that, uh, are functioning to operate, like as I stated, they are, it seems like every Monday we come in, there's one or two more sitting on Lieutenant Meyer's desk. Um, and, uh, it's, it's definitely decreasing our efficiency. Uh, we can operate it, just you, on the back end of it, when you don't have it assigned to an individual, it becomes a much more daunting task, especially when we're talking about discovery and, and providing those, those, uh, evidence to, uh, both the prosecutor and, and the defense attorney, so. Due to the frequency of those failures, it's, it's important that we address it as, as soon as possible. Uh, the, the proposal, uh, before you on the action item would replace all of our in-car and body cameras with Motorola along with the compatible interface needed to store and document the interactions that occur. Uh, as we found out, the body cameras, as since they are literally on your body in the rain and the wind and the snow and everything else and they're electronic, tend to start failing about year three. And the very positive side of this, uh, agreement is at that time in this contract, they will replace all of the body cameras that we have. So we will get a brand new set of body cameras at year three, which is typically when we, when we start having more issues with them. And our current cameras were bought with a company called WatchGuard. And as, as things go, uh, bigger companies acquire smaller companies. And that transition wasn't as smooth as, as we would have liked. But that relationship has mended and, and is considerably better than, than when it, when they first acquired, when Motorola first acquired WatchGuard because they're, you know, trying to accommodate equipment that they didn't design or manufacture and those hiccups tend to occur. Um, we've taken every opportunity to build relationships with, with those companies, with companies that, that provide these types of services. And Motorola has, has really exceeded our expectations over the last couple of years. And, and example of that was when we had our incident in QuickTrip, um, their officer involved shooting last year. A representative from Motorola drove from Nebraska on a Sunday to come here and make sure that we could pull that body camera video and provide it to the officer involved shooting, uh, team. So those, those little things that, that we're getting from them now that, that, that they're more established and in place makes us really comfortable with, with pursuing them as, as a continued vendor. makes us really comfortable with pursuing them as a continued vendor. As I said, we did explore other options. I won't name names, but the main competitor of them is a company that we also do business with that offers this very specific piece of equipment that we use. And what we are learning is that that company isn't as responsive to smaller agencies as the Motorola has been and tends to focus a lot of their efforts on the larger agencies and larger quantities and definitely has a much higher price tag. So if approved, these, we're hoping that these will be delivered in the next sixteen to ninety days, so we can start deploying them immediately. What is still kind of up in the air, and it kind of all depends on the earlier conversation about, you know, what we're doing with the fleet of vehicles, is if we will incur the expense to move the new in-car cameras over to the current vehicles or wait to install them in our, any new vehicles we would get. So we'll just kind of evaluate the costs and the length of time that we're looking at that. The body, the in-car cameras are compatible with the upgraded body cameras. But the body cameras are not compatible, our current body cameras are not compatible with the upgrade, which is why. And like I said, they'll be replaced, the body cameras replaced, but we haven't had really any issues with the in-car cameras. Very few. What we're seeing now is just they've been installed in vehicles. The in-car cameras, I believe, have been installed in vehicles for eight years. And so just the quality degradation from, you know, bumping around in a car for eight years. I've just started to see that a little bit, but they still operate and function. So what this agreement would be, a first-year cost of fifty-three thousand dollars with year two through five costs of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents per year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Chief. First, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yes, Cheryl?
I just want to say I really appreciate the due diligence and comparing the different companies. And I really think, you know, given the current environment, it's really important that this functions and works, so I appreciate this coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Debbie?
This deviates a little bit from where you are, but it has to do with you. Do we, at some point in the next committee meeting or something, could we go over some security issues at buildings where the police are not? Like Public Works, where we have a lot of expensive equipment and things, and the community center? Do we have a plan right now for security at those buildings or what, you know, what's the objective if somebody comes in with a gun? What do we do?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to discuss those things. You know, those are conversations that we kind of have internally and discuss. Matter of fact, I had a discussion today with members of management over at the Impact, just talking about security-related issues. So those things we discuss, and, you know, sometimes they're reactionary and sometimes they're proactive, but we do keep those things in mind about security, and we've invested in access control and security cameras that police department kind of controls and has access to.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of body cameras and in-car camera systems for the police department.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a five-year agreement with Motorola Solutions for Body Cameras and In-Car Camera Systems.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the vote. Ryer?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Hayden Champosi?
Hi.
King?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, there being no further business items for consideration, we will move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone in council have something they'd like to share this bump? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, a couple of things that I, most of you have probably heard, at least one, but I did tell a resident that I would bring this up since they couldn't make it. I had an email from a resident in my ward regarding the crosswalk at sixty-first and Lamar. And again, I know a lot of you have already heard about this, but I did want to go ahead and pass along their message, since I told them I would do that. The person says, "I'm contacting you in regard to the pedestrian crosswalk at sixty-first and Lamar. We reside in that neighborhood and frequently cross that particular intersection. As the weather warms, we use the crosswalk frequently with our six-month-old, and we've noticed the need for protected pedestrian crosswalk. There are a number of reasons it presents a safety concern to all pedestrians who attempt to use it. Speed is faster than Johnson Drive, and, you know, I think all of us probably recognize that cars are going faster than the posted speed limit there pretty often. There's a high volume of traffic, limited visibility. That's kind of the crest of a hill. It's a bit awkward. And you have a lot of families with small children that live in that neighborhood and want to go to the pool and the park and things like that. There, you know, I brought this up with Laura, and we have discussions going on about, you know, how we can address this and in context with all of our bike and pedestrian plan, but I do just, I wanted to pass along this message and reiterate that I have had some less-than-pleasant instances crossing at that particular crosswalk as well. So that's the first thing I wanted to pass along. The other one was a similar situation. We had our bike and pedestrian plan. We had some feedback given to us by BikeWalk KC as a result of some, well, I'll call it, you know, citizen activism, which is a good thing, but it kind of came at an awkward time. But, you know, I did, probably others of us were contacted by BikeWalk as well, wondering if those comments that they made were going to be incorporated in the bike and pedestrian plan. And I was able to get those comments or get that question addressed by staff as well, that, you know, it did sort of come at a time where it was awkward to get it into our planning cycle and get that into the last planning commission meeting, but everybody, I think, is well aware of their feedback, and I just want to say I really value that organization and their feedback, so I'm glad to hear that we're working on getting that incorporated. Thanks for everybody's diligence on that.
Any other council comments? Yeah, Leah and Mary?
It might be the same. Well, no, but it was kind of to echo some of Ben's.
Okay, well, then you go first.
Okay, yeah, as Leah mentioned earlier, we had a council meeting June.
Board meeting?
Board meeting, sorry. Board meeting, June eleventh, and kind of to echo what Councilmember Choji said. I think the biggest concern that we heard out of all twelve people who attended, so that was pretty big, just concerns generally about speeding across the entire city. And maybe you can remind me of the specific. I don't know if you can, I can pull it up on my email later, but there was just a lot of conversations about a specific, like, speed bump that people were literally, like, catching air off of. I mean, all sorts of tales and stories. So if we can kind of continue, and I know we are, and I know it's obviously a balancing act with the police department not, you know, issuing tickets on every speeder forever, but just continuing to kind of look at ways that we can slow traffic down, especially like closer to the downtown corridor. A lot of folks were really thankful about how much more walkable Johnson Drive is, but I know that there's still more to be done. So just, yeah, kind of wanted to echo some of those thoughts in other areas as well, so.
Okay, so same sort of vibe here with the board meeting, which our twelve people were very, very, very active in stating their views. And one of the things has to do with parking, which I kind of brought up before, but, you know, I know that at one point when we were talking about business development on Johnson Drive, we had talked about parking, and we haven't really talked about that since. But because we're adding so many more residents with all of the apartment buildings, and hopefully that's going to be filling in those empty storefronts on Johnson Drive, we also need to think about where all of those patrons are going to park. And we've also been talking about taking some of these empty lots that we've had that are owned by the city and turning them maybe into, you know, parkland that goes along with the Rock Creek Drive, but we should probably circle back around and think about about where, you know, people who are patroning the businesses on Johnson Drive are going to park. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there again. And then, of course, because most, or at least our board meetings talk about Gateway, just that, you know, it's looking pretty crappy again in terms of, you know, not being tidy. And I know that that's a tough thing because we don't have, you know, the ability to get action on that quickly, but maybe just, you know, another attempt to get them to tidy that up. And there was also concern that there had been people going in and out of some of the structures that are in that space, and I don't know if that's an issue, but there was concern that there could be some squatting activity going on there.
I think specific to that, I believe we did look at that and re-boarded up the Synergy Building. Our code enforcement officer went out, and so we've addressed that specifically. Our abatement contractor is mowing at least the perimeter. The rest of it's just really challenging, but it's pretty much continual attempts at contacting the property owner to see what we can do.
Yeah, I'll say as the almost next-door neighbor, I do see them mowing and maintaining the accessible grounds pretty frequently. And given what's going on, you know, what more can you squeeze from that stone? But I certainly would say it's not out of control, you know, keep it as best we can, and hopefully, hopefully, the powers that be can get things resolved.
And those abatement activities will be assessed against the property. Is that correct?
They will be, and then they'll be, we send, our practice in that instance when we abate for anybody, so we send a bill. And then if it's not paid, we will certify that on the property tax bill as a lien.
Yeah, Trent?
Just a couple of quick comments on a less serious note. Earlier this week, the City of Mission participated in the Northeast Johnson County Annual Golf Tournament. We had two teams. I played with Justin, Nilo, and Brent Morton. We had a blast. The other team was Christine, who was here earlier, Matt and Mike from the Police Department, and Devin, our code officer. So, oh, sorry, our building inspector, yeah, so you might see that trophy back there. Don't get too excited. It was basically us versus Merriam. Team wanted permission, so anyway, I asked them to bring it in tonight so you guys could see it for council, but we had a great time.
Congrats. I'm glad that no one got heat stroke golfing on the, like, hundred-and-ten-degree day, so.
I think we need to establish the trophy case in the hall.
Brent and Meyer, conditioning both went out that day.
Oh, no. That's terrible. All right, thanks, everyone. Next, we will have our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. First, our council members, Boltinghouse and Loudon, for sustainability.
I attended the June Sustainability Meeting and took notes this time, so this will be a reminder, because that was quite a long time ago. Tim Kaufman with GFL, who does our trash pickup, gave a presentation that was excellent. I'm so glad that you came. I learned lots, including that GFL means green for life. They are the fourth-largest solid waste company in North America, so we're starting to go and then in America. And they have robotic sorting at the facility here. They gave some figures at this point in our recycling. We only have a seventeen percent efficient generation rate, and I'm sure that's why neighbors next door, so we call them now. And the amount of recycling in Mission has increased, and residential trash has dropped by five percent. So go Mission. They also gave us a new list of what could be recycled and what can't be recycled, and I'm hoping maybe that makes it into the newsletter at some point in time, because I think everyone needs to be reminded of that. With the dumpsters that are taking cardboard in our commercial area, they collected around twenty-one thousand two hundred pounds of commercial cardboard in two thousand twenty-three in the recycling bins. In order to continue movement towards green, they're using compressed natural gas in their trucks. They have a women-in-waste program to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was fun. They sponsor our Green Environmental Fair. And they're also doing some kind of experiments with what to do with some of the gases that escape from trash that's decomposing and turning that into usable. Yeah, so that was really exciting. I really was surprised at how forward-thinking, you know. I appreciate they come pick up my trash every week, but now I owe them, you know, appreciation for them. And then Brian gave a presentation of comprehensive plans to that, and we talked about the bike stations. Maybe we could have GFL come and talk to Council General sometime, because it was very, very interesting. Good job.
All right. Next, we have council members, Krieger and Schmidt, for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Few things that were mentioned. They're working with bridging the gap in planting fifty trees this year. Secondly, they define that Mission currently has twenty-seven acres of green space, which is in parks. Third, I've got to use by number. Third, don't forget July thirteenth, Saturday, is our Mission Family Picnic. It's a wonderful opportunity to meet with your neighbors and friends and have a great time. Kids just love that. They have a great time at those things, and it really brings the community together. The August closure for the community center will be the nineteenth through the thirty-first, so keep that in mind. That's for maintenance, be down for maintenance. And the swim team is doing well. We had two hundred and ten people sign up to be a part of our swim team, which is really awesome. And Robin, you might elaborate on the last two meets that we had, and that's all I have.
Yeah, the swim team is doing fantastic from my point of view as a spectator and volunteer parent.
I had one other note, and that Waterworks Park was getting closer to completion. I think as of the meeting, ninety percent of the concrete was poured for the trail. I assume that's ticked up in the meantime. Anticipated completion date is the first part of August. I believe there's an open house scheduled for August twelfth at 5:00 PM. So anyone who wants to go, I frequently walk the dog there, so I will be excited to have the park open back up now.
I drove by with my daughter today, and we were very excited to see that playground equipment had been installed, so we are super excited.
People won't stay out of there until it's completed, but.
Yes, please stay out of the construction areas at both Waterworks and now Mohawk as well, everybody, if you are tuning in tonight. Thank you. Let's see, next we have an update from council members Ryer and Josie on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Traveling for business.
Yeah, I've got notes. Don't worry. So July issue, you may have seen on your desk here, and there's some issues here. The July issue with the "What Makes Mission Unique" kind of theme and the Truly Madly Depot on the front page there. I love that place. It's fantastic store. We go in there quite often. I love the theme of this issue. I thought it was really fun. There's a certain somebody in the Ward One Council with his baseball card collection that you'll want to, oh, yeah. Page twenty-eight, I'm told, yeah, so take a look. It's a lot of fun. Uh-huh, famous, yeah, for more than just being on the council. How about that? Some other notes of interest. We got some information about ad buying. It's going quite well. We have consistent customers and new interests, so that's great. Love to see that. Talked about how we can help out with some editorial efforts and upcoming theme ideas, which I'll keep you in a little bit of suspense about. Overall, just love this issue.
I would just say I'm going to ruin the surprise a little bit, but the issue that we're working on, I think the consensus was, it comes out towards the end of September, and October happens to be the SBA's Women's Small Business Recognition Month. And we have so many women-owned businesses and things here in Mission, and so that will likely guide many of the themes and stories in the upcoming issue. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, and I think this year we'll actually be able to put that together in the right timeframe.
All right, and finally, we have Councilmember Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
The committee will meet in July, and this is an eighteen-year-old program, so we will have some data to share. Thank you.
Great. And then now we have our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have anything you'd like to share with council tonight that we haven't already covered?
I do. I'm going to ask Justin to cover your interim financial reports and Robin to kind of give an update on Friday's upcoming zip trip, and then I have just a couple of other things before we close.
Thank you. So I won't, I know we had a detailed budget discussion already, so I won't really kind of dive into this, especially since these reports just really supplement that con.
especially since these reports just really supplement that conversation with some even more granular data. The good news is, what I just wanted to share is, I think, knock on wood, I've kind of got the kinks worked out with the timing of this and everything. So it's kind of an intermittent since we brought them back, but I'm hoping moving forward, now that we've put the audit to bed, you'll see at the actual council meetings, you'll see the previous month. And so that'll work nicely then as we move into next month. That'll give us a really good benchmark to look at since we'll be at the halfway point. We'll have, you know, six months worth of data for the current year. So that will really give us a chance to the projections will start looking, they'll have some more meat to them, so to speak. So unless there's any specific questions on, I won't really dwell on the the reports for and then the packet.
All right, save the most fun thing for last tonight, maybe. So if you haven't already heard, Fox Four is coming to Mission on Friday morning, between seven and ten to film their morning show. So council member Crane and I spent some time with the filming crew on Thursday last week, and then I followed them around to several other sites around town, and we recorded a bunch of great content that they will use along with live interviews on Friday morning. So we are doing all of the things we know to do to stop the rain and thunderstorms that are maybe in the forecast for Friday, because our plan is to have this hosted at the Mission market site. So we are encouraging you to come and watch the live broadcast and be in the audience. Bring your neighbors, your friends, your grandkids, anybody that you want to bring along. We'd love to show a great outpouring of support and really show the region what a great place Mission is. So you'll see some live food drops from some of our restaurants. They'll bring food in for the anchors to try. They'll be going out to some of the local businesses along Johnson Drive and doing interviews with them. Mayor Flora will give some awesome information about why it's great to be a Mission person. And I will talk about city events. So if you would like to support us, we would love to see you at the market site on Friday. If it rains enough that it's thunderstorming, they can't film outside. So if that happens, they will let me know around four thirty on Friday morning. And I will update our socials and send you all an email because none of you need to text for me that early in the morning. And our backup site, if it does turn out that the weather is not hospitable to the show, will be at the community center. So we'd love to see you at either location, and I hope that you're able to make it because I think it's going to be really fun. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or the schedule we've put together or anything.
So I understand you'll update us either way, but if it's just raining, it could still be at the market site. It's the thunderstorms that are the issue?
Yeah, my understanding is that they would prefer to be outside. It shows the streetscape so nicely and they really are able to show the community better. So unless it's thunderstorming, if it's just rain, they will go ahead and be outside. There's the thunder and lightning with the equipment is not the best mix, but we're really hoping and I've checked the Weather Channel a lot in the last two days. I mean, I asked my husband, he can tell you how many times I've been refreshing. But it looks like the chances are getting better that we'll be at the market site. So hopefully tomorrow, we continue with that better trend. Thank you.
I usually know how to turn it back on. Very quickly, Justin just mentioned the audit. We have wrapped up. I think we're in the final review of very few documents, our audit for twenty twenty three. It will be submitted to GFOA by the June thirtieth deadline. We'll bring that forward to you. I mean, it's you. The council typically accepts that document. There's nothing to change in it because it's an independent auditor's report. I will tell you that we received, again, a clean audit. So we'll look forward to bringing that forward in July. Also, just a reminder that our council meeting for July is on the second Wednesday, which is July tenth and not next Wednesday, July third. So everybody can get ready for the Independence Day holiday. And my last thing, well, and then we're also in the process of working with Shawnee Mission School District to get a kind of behind the scenes tour of Rushton Elementary. So I'll keep everybody posted on on that and probably we'll sneak in a tour of Waterworks at the same time. And the last thing, just kind of following up on the zip trip. Not so much the zip trip, but woman who has really almost single handedly pulled this zip trip together. I knew in July of twenty twenty two, when Robin started with us, that we had an excellent addition to our staff. Her passion for this community and her work with the Russian PTA and just her enthusiasm for the businesses has been overwhelming since the beginning. I think we've put that passion to the test probably for the last month. I think her comment to me this morning was, I I hope there's a recovery group for any other communities who've had to go through the zip trip planning process because it is a lot. But I I want to because it will be two weeks after. And so I wanted tonight to make sure that we said thank you for all of that work. It has been stressful, but it's going to be thanks to you on Friday that we are going to have our best foot forward. And I can hardly wait to be down there and show off our community. So thank you.
All right, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.